Our next group is the Advisory Committee on Council Remuneration, and it was chaired by Martin Taylor. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council and Administration. And almost 30 years of local government, it's my first time I sit in front of a council and make a presentation. So it's different. First of all, thank you for appointing me to the committee at large and the committee members appointing me as chair. So it was a good, nice experience for me and a privilege. So we'll get into the presentation. And by the way, the staff were really great to work with. Well, we had a good mix. The council picked a good mix of residents, age. I was the old guy and everybody else was younger, male, females, and of course, the different cultures. So we had about five meetings, a mixture in person, of course, Zoom.
Martin, before you carry on, do you have members of your committee that are here this evening?
I don't believe, but I could stand corrected.
Are there any other members of the committee that are here this evening? And if you are, if you would just wave and so we can recognize you. If not, carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I don't see anyone present, but thank you for asking that question. All right, so we worked with your existing bylaw and policies and the mandate from council was quite clear. We hired a consultant and yet again, the staff were very helpful to us. So the comparables are there from the previous, and that's what the consultant looked at. The mayor's wages and the council remuneration. So what stood out to us? The mayor's salary was in the ballpark, if I can use that term loosely. But members of council compensation was fourth in that group. So it needed, in our opinion, to change. Now, we did look into other things, too. So those are the comparable communities. I'm sure you're quite familiar with most of them. All right, so I'll just get into the recommendations because I know time is of the essence. Recommendation 1A, effective January 1st, mayor remuneration be increased by 1% and council remuneration be increased 3.5. Now, the reason we did it in over a two-year phase is that that'd be a little easier on the pocketbook of the community and taxpayers. Even though some of us felt it should have been done in one lump sum. But local government does its best work sometimes by doing things incrementally. Recommendation 1B, effective January 1st, 2024, mayor remuneration be increased by 1% and the council's remuneration be increased by 3.5%. That's recommendation number one. And if you could hold your questions to the end, but that's not up to me, that's up to the mayor. All right, number two, so there was our mandate or our task to do. So the average wage adjustment for the second, third, fourth, right. So that came forward from administration in order to do, make things a little clearer for them. So we agreed with that suggestion. It made a lot of sense and it will streamline things moving forward. I'll go to the next one. Recommendation number three, benefits. This one took a good discussion. In order to ensure parity amongst the city's peer municipality groups, the committee recommend that, effective January 1st, 2023, the city of Prince George pay 50% of the extended health and dental benefits premiums for councillors who opt-in to group benefit program. Committee felt stronger that it should be optional. Members of council, you know, some of them might have benefits, you know, through their work or on. Recommendation number four, this was quite unique, one. Unique for me, not so unique for the young members of the committee, but we did notice that in a survey by the consultant. Four, to ensure equity and inclusion, the committee recommend that, effective January 1st, 2023, city of PG reimburse the actual costs, maximum of $40 per day of babysitting or childminding expense for children under the age of 12, incurred by a council member while attending a council committee meeting event or functional or official function. It was felt that, like I said in the first line, to be inclusive and to bring equity to members of council. Five, with regards to expenses. All right, taking into consideration the expense of the physical boundaries of the municipality and the need for councillors to use a personal vehicle discharge to duties of their office, the committee recommends that council be reimbursed for the use of a personal vehicle for discharge of their duties of their office at the rate of $250 per month, inclusive of kilometers driven vehicle insurance, as the case was the mayor of vehicle allowance. We felt that it's, I don't recall which communities were doing it, but we felt it was fair. And the rationale was, well, the mayor gets one, so why not the councillors' a third? Well, I guess I open to questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Martin. Councillor Skaken.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Just to administration on the structure of this, we have, I believe, five recommendations. The bylaw, we've been asked to pass first through reading. So am I to take it that if we pass one or all five of the recommendations tonight, that the bylaw will come back, you know, with clear what we are in favor of or possibly not in favor of? First question, Your Worship.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Connelly, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through to Councillor Skaken. So the bylaw that's been proposed this evening, 9328, has been prepared according to the five recommendations that were just overviewed by the chair. So if council wants to vote on the five recommendations as stated in staff report, certainly the bylaw could be given three readings tonight if those recommendations are supported or potentially three readings as amended if any of the recommendations are not supported.
Okay, thank you. And just to the mayor and I guess administration, are we going to be dealing with these one at a time and only speaking on that item so that we can make sure that we're concise and we don't go round and round on the entire issue? Basically, efficiency, Your Worship.
Yeah, that's correct. So as we walk through the five recommendations, if mover's second or we'll see where it goes if there are alterations or amendments to that particular recommendation, then we'll deal with that at that time, councillor.
Okay, thanks. So should I put a recommendation on the floor or are you going to go around to all the councillors and then come back to the recommendation?
I've got Councillor Ramsay on the list, and I think Councillor Skaken will come back to take a look at recommendation one and move through them numerically.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Councillor Ramsay.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I just want to extend my thanks to the committee for the work that they've done. I know how hard it is because I chaired the last committee. And because of the work I did, I fell in love with the city and the work that they do, became more aware and decided to throw my hat in the ring, and here I am. So thank you to you. I also got appointed chair because I was the youngest in the room. So I appreciate all of the hard work and discussions that the committee has done because I know that a lot of research has gone into what's before us today. I'm going to kick us off by speaking to recommendation number one A and B. And there's a couple of reasons why I want to support this. The first is really, if you look at inflation, I think for May of this year, inflation hit a 40-year high of 7.7%. So this increase over a gradual period of time doesn't even come close to inflation. So to me, it does make sense to support this. Ethically, I think it's the right thing to do. There's pay equity issues that exist in this role among other municipalities, and I think that bringing it up so it's comparable to our peer municipalities is fair and equitable. So for me, that's a big piece of this. But perhaps the most persuasive reasoning for me is that as a young person who has to work full-time, it's really tough to sit here and commit so much time. I love this job. I really, really do. But I make a ton of sacrifices. I have had to take 104 unpaid days off of work to attend council meetings. I have spent 20 weeks of vacation. Haven't gone on an actual vacation in a very long time in order to sit around this table because I think it's important that young voices have a seat here. And in order for young voices to continue stepping up, I think it's important that we consider how accessible this is. And if increasing the pay by 3.5% over a couple of years, it makes it more accessible for young people to come and sit around these people, not just young people, but diverse voices, Black, Indigenous, people of color. If it makes it more accessible, then I'm in favor. So I do put a plea to my colleagues to support this. I know it's very challenging in the climate that we're in, but I, from personal experience, can tell you that it's tough. It's tough to make sacrifices. And honestly, this isn't the most appreciative job to be in. We get lots of criticism and not a lot of praise. So if we can entice young people a little bit more to step up for these types of roles, I think it's really, really important. So there's my three little pitches. Inflation, it's the right thing to do, and we really need to reduce barriers for young people and make sure that they're able to step up and give back to their community in a really meaningful way. As for the other options, I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say about them. But that's my spiel on option one.
Councillor Sampson, Everett and Skaken up next. Councillor Sampson.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. And yeah, thank you very much to you and the entire committee for all your work on this. It's not an easy committee to be on. And I've already seen your names published in the media, so there you go. You've made it. But if I'm being honest, I don't like this process. I'm sure all of us probably would agree. It's not fun to sit here and say, you're right, we should make more. Or you're wrong and we shouldn't, because everyone has different opinions on this. I didn't sign up for this job for the paycheck. However, this paycheck does not necessarily accurately represent the work that you put into this job. So it becomes a competition in your mind of what, why, you know, is this the right amount of wage for the amount of work you put in? You didn't really get into this for the wage anyways, but you're making personal sacrifices away from your family and everything else. So it's difficult. I have a question that I'm wondering is perhaps more directed at administration, not for the committee. Why is this the structure that we go through to look at councils' wages? I thought at one point, perhaps, why don't we look at what our peer municipalities are doing and say, well, the mayor should make the average of what our peers are doing, and then council should make a percentage of what the mayor makes? That way, we're not voting on our own salaries. And then I thought, well, that way, every other peer municipality could say, we want to do the same thing. Nobody ever discusses it, nothing ever happens. So then I thought, why does council not look to another level of government? Who I'll add, four years ago, decided that they were going to make their own comments and adjustments to municipal governments' wages and salaries, and they did that four years ago, the federal government. And so I thought, why do we not look at, an MP makes X amount of dollars, the mayor should make whatever percentage, you know, that would have to be determined through a committee perhaps, the mayor should make whatever percentage of an MP, and then council makes whatever percentage of the mayor. And that way, we continue to get increases as the federal government determines that their politicians at their level deserve increases based on inflation or whatever other economical reasons are happening around the country, and it's more of a scale. So I guess my question is, why is this the process we go through and not something that's more based on across the board, maybe nationwide? You know, we could be leaders in this and say, hey, everybody should look to one source. What's the reason?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll take that one on. In short, Your Worship, as you know, municipalities are creatures of the province, and the province sets the legislation. And under the legislation, it's within the discretion of municipal councils to set their own remuneration. Different municipalities handle that in different ways, but ultimately, it is within councils prerogative to set their own remuneration. Our council, and I may need some help here from Ledge Services, decided several years ago to strike an independent committee, which you see before you this evening, the Advisory Committee on Council Remuneration. And I can't speak for what the council at that time had in their mind, but I believe the policy reason behind that was to somewhat distance city council from the issue and have it more objectively analyzed by an independent committee as a reflection of the community as to what they believe is fair for remuneration for mayor and council under the terms of reference that were approved by council. So in short, city council created the committee for the purposes of providing recommendations back, and that's what we have before us this evening. But it's certainly within council's discretion to change those terms of reference or to disband the committee in future years and approach it from a different perspective if council so wishes, Your Worship.
Thanks very much, Mr. Babic. I think when we're through our recommendations, I would like to come back in at the end. I have a thought that maybe I'll wait until we go through this process, but it relates into how we make these decisions going forward. I want to stress that these decisions that we're making aren't happening until 2023, which is after this term. So the notion that we are deciding ours, our wage, is not true. That would depend if we're putting our names forward again to run in the next election. So I will say that, however, I don't like the process. We are making decisions for future councillors' wages and which may help others take the leap to run for local office, which I think is a valuable thing, and I would hope that this would encourage more people to do that. So that's my, I guess, my initial comments. I'll maybe comment as we go through the options, but I'm not a fan of the process, so I'll be coming back to that at the end. Thanks.
So we are on option one. Councillor Ramsay put that wheel in motion, so if you want to comment on.
So it's on the floor?
No recommendation made. No, it's just, but it's recommendation one is up for comment. And if somebody wants to put it on the floor, we'll garner a second or and we have the discussion.
Great, thanks, Your Worship. I guess my comments on option one, it's been noted, the committee did their work, and City of Prince George council is underpaid compared to our peer municipalities. I guess I will be in support of option one simply because it's a phased approach, but I want to see a change to how we go through this process because I don't think it's the right one. So I'll support, but going forward, I'm looking for a different process.
We'll come back to, we'll come back to that at the end. Councillor Everett, followed by Councillor Skaken.
Your Worship, do we have a motion on the floor?
No, not yet.
So I'll make that motion and then I'll speak.
Can I have a second or?
Second.
Usually it's good. Okay, we're good.
I want to thank the committee for the work that they've done on this. It's not an easy task, and it's not an easy task for us to sit on this side of the table either and talk about that particular thing. But it's about attracting candidates for the position. And there's those that are in our community that think that there's others that would do the job better than those that are sitting there. So you say, yes, put your name forward and we'll see how the ballot goes. So we're not just talking about getting raised for ourselves, per se. It's up to the citizens within Prince George to determine who is elected as their councillor going forward and how they are going to look after the affairs with that in mind. We can talk about this process not being the right one, but every time there is a process, there'll be a conversation of whether that's right or where we are. It's true, when you look at the numbers, that there's a significant difference, and you've shown us that through your work and correlating that, wages that have been put forward. I look forward to attracting new people to run for council. I think that's a good thing for our city. That gets people connected, not just on a council night, but on a go-forward basis. Even if they're successful or not successful, I should say, if they're not successful, they still have an interest in what has happened and want to participate on a future council, maybe. So I thank you for that, and I look forward to having further discussions with my colleagues.
Thank you, Councillor Everett. Councillor Skaken, followed by Councillor Scott.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Again, thanks to the committee. It's not an easy one. But this is a process I think council was unanimous in. Sure, we can change it, but I don't know if we get into a big debate about changing it tonight. Just a question to administration, the recent contract wage increases for QP members was how much? Was it about two, two and a half percent? I can't recall.
Yes, it was 2% per year.
Okay, and how about for exempt staff?
Exempt is decided on a more year-by-year basis. The 2022 increase was 2%.
Okay, that's good to know. You know, I know we haven't had a raise in a while, Your Worship, but I don't think the financial compensation is going to be a tipping point for people to run for councillor or not. I do not support this recommendation. I appreciate the work of the committee, but 3.5% next year and the year after, whatever, are we playing catch-up? Sure. But right now, I don't think it is the time. I think, you know, with the wage increases being almost half of what we're asking, we can't, you know, go to our exempt staff or we can't go to the QPU locals and say, well, you know what, we think 2% is fair for you, but 3.5% or 4% is fair for us. So for recommendation one, Your Worship, I do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm also going to go back to Mr. Dalio. Did QP not receive annual increases over the last three years?
Yes, they did. The QP increase is a three-year contract, so the 2021, 2022, and 2023 will all be 2% increases. Exempt staff had a 0% in 2020, a 0% in 2021, and a 2% in 2022, and council's increases are tied to exempts.
All right. And I mean, I read through this whole report, and I too extend my gratitude for all the work that your committee has done, for sure. I think that there are more issues at stake than most members of the general public understand. And this is really helpful. Earlier today, Councillor Ramsay and McConaughey and myself were at an event at the Marriott, and we got into a conversation about the reality, and it's not a complaint, but it is a reality, that not everyone who is on council is finding it easy to find work, aside from council. And so in my case, when I was elected the first time, my employer eliminated my job because you can't serve two masters. I accept the logic, but it gives one pause. And so for a variety of reasons, and maybe those are included, I do support the recommendation that's come before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. Councillor McConaughey, followed by Frisell and Kraus.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hall. And also, it's been said before, but heartfelt thank you to the committee, to all the members of the committee. Five meetings is amazing. That's an incredible amount of time invested. And sometimes I would rather drop a $100 bill than give an hour of my time. So it's tough. Time is very, very precious. So, and I have less time than I do, or less money than I do time. So I hear my council colleagues' comments, and I too think that it is very important to attract people to this position. It's not all doom and gloom. It's pretty amazing to be at a table where you get to make decisions and speak for others that maybe can't speak for themselves or also to try to bring some wisdom and debate. And I think it's a pretty fabulous opportunity. One of the reasons why I'm not looking at supporting it has nothing to do with, I don't want to talk about my own wages. I have no problem talking about money. I don't think we should ever. I've always told my kids or board members, never be shy to talk about money. My thing is, is I'm just looking at the size of our population. Surely the difference in the level. You know, our next peer municipality, rather, is about 10,000 more, and so 10,000 higher. I'm just looking at, we are also the smallest population on this whole chart. I think that the stipend that we receive is meant to offset those vacation days and whatnot that affect our employment. That's why, even though I'm making the comments now, that I don't want to support an increase in council or mayor, I think the mayor's position. I'm grateful that we brought that up to where it needs, closer to where it needs to be last round. I am really grateful for the other opportunities because being on council and letting your time outside of work or whatever, other activities, family obligations, should not cost extra money for a mile. I do want to open it up. I want to remove barriers. I want more people to raise their hand for these chairs. And I think at this point, as our city grows, I think we need to look at our stipend. But I'm really grateful. I think it's brilliant for the points four and five. I think that will make a big difference for folks that are juggling work or family responsibilities to reduce additional costs to doing this job. So that's where I stand, Mayor Hall. I don't support an increase at this time, just based on our population. And I think, and with the percentage raises of our QP staff, of our exempt staff, and I'm mindful of all the other working people that are still busy climbing out of the hold created by COVID, that are also not seeing any increases right now. That doesn't mean it's a race to the bottom, but I think we could just park this right now because I think it's not a bad comparison, in my opinion, with the size of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McConaughey. Councillor Frisell, followed by Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Just if you'll bear with me, I'd like to just quickly touch on all five because they relate. I think it's, I want to say it's visionary, the items three and four. Health, dental, and childminding, absolutely. This is good stuff. Bravo. And thank you to the whole committee. And I'll just build on Councillor Ramsay's comments. I hope we see all of you running in the next election, too. This is good.
Yeah, my wife wants me to.
Excellent. Good. There's two. I am looking at the other items. So if I got this right, over two years, that's a 7% increase for council. And that means overall, an increase of about $21,000 a year. And then I compare that with item five, which looks like it would be a $24,000 increase a year. So I'm trying to judge how the numbers are going here and what the, where the votes are going to be, but it seems like there would be a split that would bring both of those things to be. And I think we're heading into some tough times. I think Councillor Skaken has hit on an important point that it's, with the way the world is going right now, it may be time to buckle in and take a hit for another term. Again, we're not making decisions about attracting people right now. We're making decisions about what the pay is going to look like for the next council. And it is an odd mix, Councillor Sampson, between working for the social interest and working for the interest of whoever sits in these chairs. Absolutely. I'm really not comfortable with going with a 7% increase to the council salaries. And I was pretty adamant until just before council, I was chatting with Councillor Ramsay about some of the direct impacts. Absolutely, people who are driven by, who are in tough times, need an opportunity. We got to make this place more welcoming. And to that end, I'm going to propose, after we're done with this, a separate motion around bringing in a campaign school so that we can make sure it's clear to everybody that this is a place where everyone's welcome around the table, and I want to encourage people to run. At this point, I can't see approving 7% over the course of two years and then adding the council reimbursement of 250 a month. That seems like a lot to be putting on at a time where we're seeing that it's getting tighter. I've appreciated the comments of the council colleagues around the table, and I'm eager to hear more. At this point, I'm not really comfortable with bringing on one, two, and five. I'm not really comfortable with bringing on one, two, and five. And then just on a question, on a point of information, the annual wage adjustment piece, uh, you brought in the HRSDC's aver- average annual percentage wage adjustments, and I think those are done, those are based on settlements with unions, um, across Canada with municipalities. Is that, is that where that number's coming from?
I have to ask, uh, we have to answer that question. I'm semi-retired now, so I don't follow all that, uh, all that closely anymore.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Emery. There's the, the reference to the HRSDC numbers that come out quarterly.
That's right. That's the, uh, public sector, uh, settlement is the, um, average that we look at, Your Worship.
Thanks, and I'm just wondering if you could give us some background into, into the rationale for picking that, that number. Sometimes we've talked about CPI and MPIs and, uh, no FBI's, but, um, what, where is this number coming from and what does it represent?
Uh, it represents the, um, average increases for public sector across Canada by quarter, so it seemed to be a good reflection of the current economic situation. Um, it's one of the reasons why we've suggested a wording change, Your Worship, because currently, we're almost a year behind by the time we look at those comparisons, and we wanted to, um, make the comparisons more accurate in terms of what's going on economically, and also allow us to do it earlier in the year, so that it's more current, uh, for council.
Thanks, and while you're up, if you'll indulge me, I'm just curious about, I want to build on Counselor McConaughey's comments, uh, on basing it on population and comparisons with others. I mean, I've, I've recently been part of a, an evaluation where we're looking at everything from the expertise of the candidate, the hours that they've worked, their presence socially, how effectively they work with, lead their, their staff, those kinds of things, and those aren't parts of how the council wage is proposed to be influenced. It's just purely on population. Is that, is that, how did we come to that rationale?
Those municipalities are actually identified in the council remuneration bylaw, and, um, you know, I think Prince George is a little bit unique, uh, in terms of size and location and scope of services, but those were seen to be the closest comparators within the province, Your Worship, and so we've used that, that group consistently for a number of years.
Thank you, and bravo. No question on it. Thank you. I'm not comfortable with, uh, with doing one, A, B, and five at the same time, but I'd be eager to hear other proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frisell. Counselor Kraus.
Well, thank you, Your Worship, and I guess, uh, at the start of this conversation, I was, uh, supportive of one, A, and B, but after listening to my council colleagues, I'm not so sure, and I guess, uh, but I want to say that, um, I, yeah, you don't do this job for the money, because it's just not there. And, uh, secondly, and I think that we're not necessarily voting for our own, uh, salary increase, because, uh, we not, might not be sitting around the table. But I also want to say that, um, as has already been raised, um, uh, our employees', um, salary increases, uh, happened annually, uh, while, uh, council was, uh, in acknowledgement of what was happening in the community, uh, got zero. So I think that, you know, we're not comparing apples and apples here when we look at what the, what our employees were making, what our employees received in salary increases and what council received. But I guess I'm, I'm in a bit of a stalemate. I don't know quite what to say now, and I think that, uh, other than I want to thank the committee, um, you know, this isn't an easy job, and I think you did a great job in acknowledging that, um, probably this council is underpaid, and, uh, I'll just leave it at that. And I just, I also want to say, too, that, um, as time wears on here, uh, I'm hoping that we're not going to discuss an alternate way to, um, decide on this this evening. Uh, I would hope that maybe we'd come forward as a notice of motion or some other process, so that, um, we can deal with it in its entirety and having had a chance to look at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ramsay.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, you know, I, I just want to respond to the comments about population. Yes, the report is based off of population, but I think it's really important to note that regardless of population, we still go to the same number of meetings as the city of Vancouver. We still have the same number of committee meetings. We spend the same number of hours in meetings. We go through the budget. Every community goes through and does the same amount of work regardless of population. So, I, I just don't think it's as simple as disregarding population right off the bat, because we're doing the same amount of work. In fact, we've had a ton of special council meetings this past year, so I would argue that perhaps we're doing a lot more work than other colleagues across the province. And so, I, I, I just, I just have to urge my colleagues that pay equity is a huge issue here, and, and when your colleagues in other cities doing the same amount of work are earning a significant number of, a, a significant amount more than you, it is a little bit demoralizing to have to give up and make sacrifices in my personal life to be here because they believe in the work. I'm not here for the paycheck. I'm here because I love this job, but it doesn't disregard the fact that I make personal sacrifices to be here, including sacrifices to my own personal pay. 104 unpaid days off work by the end of this term is what I will have taken. So, to me, this is important, and I hope my colleagues will consider supporting it.
Thank you. Counselor Skaken.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, I, I'm, you know, I appreciate where Council Ramsay is coming from, but I don't think it's fair to ask for her to come back in, rebut some of the comments we're saying, and the council procedures bylaw is pretty clear on that. So, um, whenever we're ready, Your Worship, I don't have any more to add to the debate, and, uh, I guess you or myself can call a question.
Yeah, I'm prepared to allow folks to come back in. I always have been, Counselor Skaken, and, uh, in, in this case, I'm prepared to allow other counselors to come back in and make comment. That's what this forum is all about. So, I, I would, I would leave it at that, and I do have comments as well to make. Uh, I'm not going to push or pressure anybody to make quick decisions this evening. I think the debate is good. I think the conversation is good, and that's what this forum provides.
Okay, thanks. And then Counselor Sampson had some sort of point of order. I want to hear that, Your Worship.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I said point of order, because I don't think the, uh, reference to the, uh, bylaw was correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then you're the mayor. You get to determine how many times people come in.
Well, it was correct.
So, let me make something perfectly clear here this evening, and I've said it once or twice already. In council chambers, it gives us a forum, a public forum, to talk about issues that come before us. Each one of us will make our own decision. We will debate it. We have always been respectful. We've taken the opportunity to do that over and over again, and I expect nothing less this, uh, this evening on this issue and others that we're going to face going through. If, in fact, a counselor wants to come in for a couple more comments, I've been very flexible over the years on that, and I will continue to do that this evening. Thank you. Uh, let me just, uh, make a couple of comments, uh, and if there's no other speakers, then I'll call a question. Uh, Mr. Dalio, you had mentioned, and I, I'm going to get the years wrong, was it 2020, 2021 that council took a 0% increase?
That's correct, Your Worship. Um, there was an increase, a small one. It was, I think, 1.23% that council had got in 2020, but when the pandemic hit, um, council decided to take a zero from the moment of the pandemic onwards. So, the increase would have been valid for January to March of 2020, because we couldn't claw back.
Correct.
But, uh, the increase going forward from that time was equivalent to the 2019 salaries that everyone was making.
And as you said, uh, we are tied to the senior administration team, uh, with respect to wage increases. They saw 2% last year, so, uh, whatever we decide this evening, if, in fact, it's in favor, then it's an eligible increase.
That's correct, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. So I just, to, for, quickly, uh, if we take a look at the upcoming year at 3.5% for council, it's, uh, $10,614.24. Mr. Dalio, am I close? Don't mean to put you on the spot. I'll let you calculate that. Means, uh, for each individual council member, 1,326.78. I hope those numbers are right. Uh, I took the, I took the average and, uh, that we receive on an annual basis, multiplied that by the 3.5%, and we'll work from there.
I have not done the math, Your Worship, but I, I trust you have it.
Uh, thanks. And then, uh, for the mayor's, 1%, it would be 1,294.61, applied in the first year and second year. So, uh, those are just a couple of things. You know, this is difficult. It's been said 100 times around the table, that this is a difficult process. Uh, we third-party this out to a committee that does a tremendous amount of work just for this reason, uh, lands on an election year. But for me, uh, it could land on an election year, it could land next year, it could have landed two years ago, and I am absolutely adamant about the fact that these folks around the table are paid what they're worth. And sometimes, uh, people will say to me, uh, "You, you were paid too much. You don't deserve to be paid. You should volunteer." Well, I completely disagree with that. Uh, this is a tough job. None of us, none of us put our hand up because we were going to get, uh, a wage. None of us put our hand up because we were wanting to increase our salary year after year after year. Um, th- this is about pay equity. This is about what it means to be a counselor in Prince George and how it compares to being a counselor in Calhoun and Kelowna, and I will tell you that I see no difference. I see no difference between the mayor's job here and in Kelowna and Nanaimo and all of my peer municipalities, um, and I work closely with those individuals and have become great colleagues. Uh, this, um, the timing, uh, so the timing doesn't reflect my decision. For me, it's about the equity. For me, it's about how do we make sure that we are paid appropriately? How does, how do we make sure that we're reflective of our peer communities? And, uh, I, I will say that, uh, I think that where we are at today will, in fact, help, uh, individuals who are considering this position, considering running this fall, will, in fact, uh, give them probably, um, a more positive approach to letting their name stand. So, thank you. Counselor Skaken.
Oh, no, I, I'm not in the queue, Your Worship. Thank you.
All right, so I don't have any, anybody else in the queue. We've got the recommendation on the floor. Uh, all those in favor of the recommendation, please. Those opposed? Counselor McConaughey, Counselor Frisell, opposed on Zoom?
Counselor Skaken opposed.
Counselor Skaken's opposed. That passes six to three. Thank you. All right, recommendation two, please. If somebody would put that on the floor, we have discussion. Thank you, Counselor Everett. Counselor Kraus on recommendation two, uh, and I'll turn it over to the queue. Anybody wanting in?
Question?
Yep. Let me just, uh, queue in here. Okay, recommendation two is to provide clarity for the calculation of annual wage adjustments. The committee recommends in addition that section 2.4b of the bylaw be updated as follows: the average of the wage adjustment for the second, third, and fourth quarter of the previous year, and the wage adjustment for the first quarter of the current year for the public administration industry published by Human Resources Skills Development Canada as the average annual percentage wage adjustment by quarter. I need some clarification on that.
So it's the same wording as is the current bylaw, Your Worship, except it advances the timeline? So I will just, uh, just reference the current bylaw.
I guess where I am falling short, Ms. Emery, is I don't understand the wage adjustment specific to the second, third, and fourth quarter.
So, the government publishes average, uh, wage adjustments quarterly for, uh, public sector employers throughout the country.
Okay.
And so what the methodology that the city uses is that we reference that document, and we look at, um, those three quarters in the previous year, as well as we would look at the first quarter for the current year, and get an average of that, and then we would compare that to the, the, um, adjustment that the management exempt group has been awarded for the same current year, and council would receive the lesser of those two averages.
Okay, thank you very much. So really, for all intents and purposes, that bylaw provides administration with a guideline to move us through this process.
That's correct, so that you receive an adjustment each year.
Thank you. I've got a mover on that recommendation. Counselor Frisell, could I have a second, or please? Second, or Counselor Everett? Nobody in the queue? All those in favor for recommendation? Sorry, recommendation two, all those in favor in the room? All those opposed in the room? Opposed on Zoom?
Opposed, Brian.
Thank you. That carries seven to two. Counselor McConaughey and Counselor Skaken are opposed to recommendation two. Recommendation three? Thank you. Second on three, please. Counselor McConaughey, and it is in order to ensure parity amongst the city's peer municipality group, the committee recommends that effective January 1, 2023, city of Prince George pays 50% of the extended health and dental benefit premiums for councils who opt into the group benefits program. Any question? Counselor Frisell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Drew to Ms. Emery. Would there be an impact if we switch that? Often we go up to when it's a percentage. Uh, it says 50% of extended health and dental pre- benefits premiums, and some counselors would have percentage access to some plans. Is that, is there any potential financial benefit to the city just saying pay up to, or will it always be 50% if there's a claim made?
It would always be 50%, Your Worship. What you're talking about is, uh, splitting between benefit carriers
Yes.
in a family, but it, the premium would always be that percentage specified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Skaken.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Just to administration, um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Emery, that, uh, counselors used to get some dental coverage, uh, years ago, did we not?
Uh, Your Worship, I don't recall if they were ever included on the benefit plan.
Okay, so, uh, do we have any idea what, um, paying 50% of, uh, um, an extended health plan would be? And, uh, extended health, would that be, uh, prescription coverage and things like that?
That's correct, Your Worship. Extended health typically covers things like vision care, prescription, uh, drug usage, and, uh, paramedicals like chiropractors, massage therapists, that kind of thing. And so, um, the premium amounts, 50% of a, uh, premium, so for a single coverage, it would be $33 a month, and up to a family coverage would be $82 a month. That's the 50% uh, premium amount.
Okay.
For dental.
Great.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say for dental.
No, go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, we always talk, Your Worship, about, um, wanting to attract younger people to council. This, in my opinion, is a benefit for attracting people that might be retired, that have lost some of their extended health benefits, but could actually have them if they ran for council, Your Worship. So as far as number three, uh, I move number three, if I can get a second, or?
Counselor Frisell, seconds?
Yeah, and that's all I got to say. I support three, Your Worship. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson, followed by Counselor McConaughey.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, just for clarity, I think, uh, if I remember correct, four years ago, uh, in the onboarding, uh, council was offered to buy into the program, but obviously paying 100% if we wanted to get benefits, correct? So counselors can pay the 100% premium at, currently at this time, and, and get the benefits if we had a, say, a job that didn't cover, have a benefits program?
I believe so, Your Worship.
Great, thanks. I, um, personally, I, I, I see this as a part-time job. I think most people, uh, come into this and get a, a part-time, uh, or do this on the side of another job. I have benefits. I know that some people may not, but given the fact that counselors can buy in if they choose to at 100%, uh, I was in favor of the wage increase. That makes things like this more accessible if you so choose, so I'm actually not going to support three. Um, I think, um, uh, increasing council remuneration gives flexibility to choose how you spend that, which I agree with, brings us in the realm of, uh, where we are at with, um, our peers, uh, but, uh, if a counselor chooses to get, uh, those benefits, they can with that increased wage. If they choose not to, for example, myself, I have a benefits package through my employer. I don't need that. So I think, uh, uh, I'm, I'm kind of going the opposite route of maybe some of my colleagues. I, I hear Counselor Skaken, but, um, we, we just passed an increase, uh, if, if the counselor so chooses to use that, uh, some of those funds towards, uh, benefits package, we can buy in if we choose to right now, uh, just as 100% instead of 50. So I'm not going to support three. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor McConaughey.
Thanks very much, Mayor Hall, and, um, I, I think this is a fantastic addition. I appreciate the work of the committee on this. I think this could be, or will be, a great addition to any, um, person running, um, whether a single, family, retired, anybody, um, would appreciate. to any person running, whether a single family, retired, anybody would appreciate this gesture that comes with this job. I think this is a game changer. I think it's really important. So thank you, Mayor Hall. I'll be supporting.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anybody else in the queue. Council, we have recommendation three on the floor. All those in favor, please. Those opposed in the room? Councillor Ramsay, Councillor Sampson opposed, opposed on Zoom. That carries seven to two. Thank you. Council, we have recommendation four, and I know that's up on the screen, so I'm not going to read it.
Move four.
Thank you. That's Councillor McConaughey. Councillor Kraus moves recommendation four, and Councillor Ramsay to speak to the recommendation, then Councillor Kraus.
Thanks, Your Worship. Councillor Skeken and I attended UBCM remotely this year, and there was a resolution that hit the floor that had quite some debate about parental support for councillors. It wasn't exactly about daycare. It was more about maternity, or, sorry, parental leave. And there were quite some dissenting voices against supporting it. And I made the point that, you know, if you miss three meetings, you're booted from council. I think there was a woman there that had her 10-month-old, or 10-day-old baby. She had just given birth to a baby 10 days and was at UBCM debating parental leave on the floor. And I just thought, this is ridiculous. It costs, you know, $37,000 to pay a councillor and $80,000 to run a referendum. So do the math and figure out which way is more economical for the community. But we've been pushing for more and more parental leave so that it's more accessible for parents to come into this role. And I think this is just such an important piece of this. I really commend the committee for their work on this because I think it's incredibly important that if someone with a child that doesn't have access to services, that they can really make sure that they're able to attend council meetings. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you very much. I have Councillor Kraus and then Everett.
Well, thank you, Worship, and I too will be supporting it. Of all of the recommendations in this, in this report, this is, I think, the one that brings the most equity to the opportunity of serving on council. I think there's a lot of incredible people out there that right now don't even consider it because they might not be able to afford the childcare that would be associated with them spending time away from home. So I think this is just a great recommendation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Everett, followed by Sampson.
Thank you, Worship, and I too will be supporting this recommendation. And if I look at the 50% that we just talked about in three, be lucky if 50% of this is what you're going to pay for childcare in our community. So I think it's something that's long overdue.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sampson, followed by Councillor McConaughey.
Thanks very much. I'll keep it short. I agree with my colleagues. Something like this, to me, I go, I don't need that. But what about those single moms who want to run for council, or a parent who wants the support but their spouse works out of town or anything like that? It does bring equity to the job, and I think it's important. It's a minor expense, but it brings more possibilities to the folks who want to pursue local office. So I support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor McConaughey, followed by Councillor Skeken, Scott, and Frisell.
Thanks, Mayor Hall. You're gonna get comments. I just think this is brilliant. Kudos to the committee. While I think that council is, for the size of our community, adequately remunerated at this time in light of the other increases with the people that work for us, I think this is, as Councillor Kraus said, one of the most important things that we could vote on. It shouldn't cost a person additional money to be able to attend council meetings and participate in the democracy around this table. And Councillor Sampson said the same thing. Folks that are working, shift work, out of town, anyway, the possibilities are endless. I think this is, I really hope that this makes a difference, and folks that think that I can do that, too. I can manage my family and do a public service at the same time. So, not to add more to working parents to their plates of expectations, but hopefully that this will add an opportunity. Thanks, Mayor Hall.
Thank you. Councillor Skeken, followed by Councillor Scott.
Well, thanks, Your Worship. This is progressive, you know, and I think if we pass this tonight, that says a lot about the organization, compassionate, empathetic. And, you know, it's not just about single moms. It's also about single dads, Your Worship. It could be grandparents with custody of their children. So I think it's pretty encompassing, and it's a great move, so I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Worship. And I've had many thoughts as I've been listening here. It's not only single moms, it's single dads. It's also married people that use daycare because more and more both parents have to work. And frankly, an awful lot of grandparents are raising their children, their grandchildren now, too. So as a piece of equity, this is wonderful, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Frisell?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Through to Mr. Taylor or Ms. Emery. $40. I'm wondering where the number came from.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Frisell. It could be from one of the communities. I know there was some discussion about how much, so I can't clearly provide you the clear answer, but we did discuss the amount. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's based on some of the costs from daycares in the Prince George area?
My recollection, it's been a few weeks now, I thought that the debate was, yeah, how much do I pay for daycare in town? Because we had a couple of parents that had kids on the committee.
Okay, so there was some expertise on that. It just struck me as the amount that might be hosted for a couple of hours for going out back 15 years ago when our kids were young. So it seemed a little low. And overall, even if we were doing that $40 a day every day of the year, that only comes out to $15,000, which is less than the increase, less than the proposed vehicle allowance. And I'm wondering if we should let a little bit of leeway so that we can find out what the costs are, because 40 seems, with respect, I know you wanted to bring forward a conservative budget, but it seems like it might be hard to find that price. So I'm wondering what direction we could go on if we wanted to get more information.
So I'm going to throw one out, Mr. Babich and Ms. Connelly. I don't want to postpone the vote on this or on five. Is there something we could do when we get to the recommendation around the first three readings of the bylaw?
Your Worship, this is something that council could vote on. It's on the floor, or potentially it's something that we could not include within the bylaw and take away. Perhaps Mr. Babich has some other thoughts on potential direction?
No, Your Worship. In order to implement these changes, council needs to vote on a bylaw amendment. So if it's not voted on this evening, then it would be postponed to a future council meeting pending further information back to council as requested, Your Worship.
I don't want to delay it, but this may come back because 40 seems, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Frisell. Council, we have recommendation four on the floor. All those in the room in favor, opposed in the room, opposed on Zoom. That's carried unanimously. And if we take recommendation five, please.
Move five.
Thank you. Second on five, please. Councillor McConaughey. I don't have anybody in the queue. Councillor Sampson?
Thanks very much for letting me in, Your Worship. I'm not going to support recommendation five, although I do appreciate the committee's recommendation on this. I get where they're coming from, I think. We do do a lot of driving, and sometimes from one end of the city to the other. There's events or meetings or functions or representing the city at some organization. But I guess where does it end in that case with this job? Should we get a cellphone allowance? Should we get internet allowance? We do meetings at home or reading at home online. Do we get clothing allowance? We're expected to dress to a certain way as well, right? And I guess when I looked at this, although I appreciated it, because there is an expense that goes into commuting for this job, I think how I see it is that's an expense of the job, and that's what our remuneration is there to cover. Again, this is a part-time job, debatable, and sometimes how many hours you put in. And it's also, I guess I would add, some councillors, it's up to the councillor how many hours you put in. But I would say it can be somewhat part-time job, and you do another job on the side, and that's your source of income. This is supposed to, the remuneration we receive, which is why I supported it, is supposed to be encompassing of your expenses, your vehicle, your cellphone, your internet, whatever you need to do to do the job. So I'm not going to support it. I get the intent, and I appreciate that, but I supported the increase to the overall wage. So that can be directed by the councillor who's receiving that wage in the way that they need to do the job, the way they need to do. This would not be, I guess I could think of a councillor who maybe doesn't have a license. They don't have a vehicle. Would they get this to take the bus instead or to ride their bike, right? So to me, I'd rather put that money into the overall remuneration and have that directed through to the expenses that are expected of the position. So I'm not going to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Skeken, followed by Everett.
Well, thank you, Worship. I will support this. The price of fuel has skyrocketed. It's going to be up there. Council members do not get compensated for in-town travel yet. Soon as we leave town to go to any source of travel, then we are compensated, and there's a scale, and I don't know if that's in the fees and charges bylaw, or the council procedures bylaw, but we do get compensated per kilometer when we leave town. And I do a hell of a lot more driving around in town as a city councillor than I do driving to conventions in that year, Worship. And it's about being compensated. And, you know, I don't want to use my council wages to pay for a whole bunch of things I need to do and to support me as a councillor. And I think this is appropriate. We can revisit it. If the fuel costs go down, there's nothing stopping the next council from striking this or lowering the allowance, Your Worship. So in this case, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Everett?
Well, thank you, Worship, and I appreciate the comments around this, but I think that we've went good ways down the road with our motions this evening to develop a new bylaw. And I think that we've done what I would consider enough.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Worship. I too am not in favor of this one. I feel that it may put an unfair onus on individuals to move their insurance category from pleasure to business. And that would frankly negate any potential savings through remuneration of the vehicle, of, you know, vehicle use. So I think we're, no, I'm not going to support this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McConaughey, Councillor Sampson, I'll skip, if you don't mind, go to Councillor Ramsay and Kraus for first time in.
Thanks very much, Mayor Hall. And I just want to express, too, that whether certain areas of this new bylaw pass or fail, it is absolutely no reflection on the committee or the work of the committee. So I think it's worth saying that I don't want it to be taken as a dagger if something does not pass, and it's just worth saying out loud. So thank you. If the recommendation one A and B did not pass, I would have supported number five. So I won't support it because it did. So much the same as Councillor Everett. But I think we've taken it down the road enough for tonight, and thanks, Mayor Hall.
Councillor Ramsay, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Councillor Ramsay, Councillor Kraus, Councillor Sampson.
Thanks, Your Worship. I think I'm in alignment with Councillor Sampson in that this isn't a full-time job, so I don't think I'm going to be supporting the vehicle allowance tonight. I do definitely hear Councillor Skeken's words in that, you know, driving around to look at properties for variance and rezoning, you know, there is a personal expense, and fuel is too high right now. So I do hear Councillor Skeken's words, but I do, again, I think I'm leaning more towards what Councillor Sampson said, in that it isn't a full-time job, and how you get around is how you get around. And I do think I will not be supporting recommendation five, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kraus?
Well, thank you, Worship, and I think it's all been said. I will not be supporting it either. Thank you to the committee, though, for the thought. And I think we've gone a long ways this evening in fair remuneration of council and council time. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sampson?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just two things that I meant to mention in this. First, the vehicle allowance would actually equal more. The $250 a month a year equals $3,000 a year, which is more than the total combined recommended increase for the council wages. The 7% doesn't even equal $3,000. This is $3,000 a year. So I just want to point that out. This is $3,000 a year, where the recommendation that passed option one is $2,600 total over the next two years. So I just want to point that out. And the second thing is, council is self-governed. If I don't want to show up to a meeting, an event, any of that, I don't have to. And same with any of my colleagues. I'm not saying that's the smart choice or the right choice, but you don't have to. I'm my own keeper, and on Election Day, if I so choose to run again, the public will either say, "You didn't do your job," or "You didn't do it well enough," or "You did do your job." And so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, a vehicle allowance is very subjective. Unless we're submitting receipts, unless we're submitting mileage, unless we're proving that we were commuting for business, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. The remuneration is something that I receive to do this job, and I will spend it on what I need to do to do this job. A vehicle allowance implies that I am driving a certain amount per month for this job, where frankly, I'm not required to. I think it's the right thing to do, and so I do it, and I drive a heck of a lot for this job. But I'm just very mindful that if we were to go this route, I think there would have to be accountability to submitting your kilometers, submitting receipts of some sort to be able to prove that this is what you're doing in this job, because that is what the $250 a month is for. So I should have mentioned that when I first jumped in, Your Worship, but I thought it was important to stress when I was going over this. I appreciate the notion. I just can't get on board with the lack of ability to account for the $250 a month. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Skeken?
Well, thank you, Worship. You know, and I can understand my council colleagues where they're coming from. I'm not going to support this either. I would like to have seen it passed, but I think maybe there has to be a better way, as Councillor Sampson said, to, if we're going to do something like this, to track the kilometers to, you know, to make sure we're accountable. But at this point, I won't support it, but that doesn't mean that the next council, whoever might be on it, might, you know, want to tackle it. So thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else in the queue? Council, we have recommendation five, been moved in second, and all those in favor in the room? Opposed in the room? Opposed on Zoom?
Opposed.
That's defeated unanimously. Thank you. Council, thanks very much. Mr. Taylor, you saw some great debate tonight on the number of weeks that you and your team put together to bring this to us. And I want to thank you very much. As difficult the conversation, you know, we had this evening, I'm sure you had the same around your table. And I think you brought to us five very, very solid recommendations. So thank you. And if you would pass that on to your team, and I will do that as well this coming week, to thank them for the work that they've done.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a good mix of members of the community that council appointed. It brought forward a bunch of perspectives. Some of us had local government backgrounds, others did not, so it was a really good mix of residents to have on the committee. Once again, I want to thank the administration, all the staff. It was a pleasure to work with them. So on behalf of the committee, thank you for your service. All the best to those who put your election. And if you need some other services, please reach out, and have a good day. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Before you leave, Councillor Frisell, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Connelly, a comment before I?
Yes, thank you, Worship. I just wanted to draw council's attention to the recommendation for first three readings of bylaw and the amended.
Yeah, gonna get there right. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, Councillor Frisell, I'll come back to you in a moment. We do have the recommendation on the bylaw for first three readings.
So, sorry, Your Worship, just to interject and provide some clarity for members of the public, section D 4.3, sorry, section, let me read on my screen. I'll look here. Section D 4.3 is the reference to the vehicle allowance, so that would be removed from the bylaw. In addition to that, there'll be some adjustments needing to be made to the Schedule B, which is the expense document, travel claim council member expense document attached as Appendix A to the bylaw. So with those changes, Council B.
Thank you. And then those changes will reflect in fourth reading as well.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, council, all those in favor of the bylaw, third reading? Opposed in the room? Opposed on Zoom? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Your Worship, just the mover and second on that that I missed?
Yeah, sorry. It was, let me go back to the Councillor Kraus. Councillor Frisell, did you second that? Thank you. Okay, Councillor Frisell?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Public hearings. And this is separate from the remuneration.
Just, yes.
Sorry, your worship, just looking at the time, we do have four public hearings scheduled this evening, and we are past.
We're well past.
I'll be quick.
Let, Counselor Frizzell, quickly, and then we're going to move.
Thanks. One of the items this discussion brought up, one-on-one with, with people around the room, was how much we want to encourage a diverse group of candidates to come forward during the election. This is one method in the long run that may generate more interest, but I think we should be more proactive. Mr. Dalio, how much money do we have left in the council contingency? I think we've only spent about $1,000.
That's my recollection as well. Earlier in the year, we did $1,000 for Ukraine, I believe, so there's still $74,000 left.
I move that council instruct staff to identify a campaign school that the city will engage to encourage candidates from diverse backgrounds to consider running in the upcoming 2022 municipal election, with a budget of up to $5,000 from council contingency.
Thank you. So I guess I need some clarity. You're asking council, or sorry, administration to go away, do some work on this, and we're, we're in a tight timeline here, very tight. So I want to go to Mr. Babic. You're also suggesting, and the recommendation was around, taking $5,000 from council contingency to apply to this.
Yes.
And, okay. Mr. Babic, you need to be, I need, we need to know what kind of a timeline you need.
So, your worship, I'm going to have to turn to Ms. Connolly, I'm giving her a heads-up as the chief election officer and the manager of alleged services in terms of the workload that's involved to prepare for the election right now.
Can I make a suggestion, Counselor Frizzell? And sorry to interrupt, I'm really looking at our timing tonight. We've got four public hearings that were already an hour late on. I'm wondering if we could just give direction to administration to come back to the July 11th meeting with this information. Are you comfortable? I mean, I, I'm open to what council wants to do, I'm just thinking about where we're at this evening. And? Okay, Ms. Connolly.
Your worship, that, yeah, Mr. Babic's comments are accurate. We have the civic election ahead of us, a small team running that election, but certainly, if council wishes to have some more information on this, staff could, could bring that back.
Thanks for, July 11th would be great. Thank you. Just thinking about prepackaged, there are a lot of campaign schools out there you can just buy and get off the shelf and bring in. I'm not, I'm not wanting to engage additional resources and forces, just wanting to, to get it. So if we can come back with information for the 11th, I can amend my motion to that.
Would that work, Ms. Connolly?
You know, more time, your worship, would be preferred if possible. I'm just thinking about the work items ahead of us before the 11th meeting, and the long weekend ahead as well. If, if we could report back by the end of July, that'd be appreciated. Mr. Time.
End of July.
Yeah, I guess it's, it's, I'm going to get to you, Counselor Sampson and Skaken, in a moment. I, I guess I'm just looking at the workload that Ms. Connolly's department has with respect to the upcoming election, and how we can make this work. Does the, so does the end of, does the end of July work? Getting too far in?
If you wish, I could make a motion to defer until after the public hearings are done.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's just, let's, so counsel, if you would, if you're good, we'll put this on the table, and we'll get to public hearings and come back. Counselor Sampson?
Thanks, your worship. Yes, I'd be fine with that, because I have some comments on this. But also, I, I wanted to jump in at the end of what we were talking about there, I mentioned at the beginning, with something that directly referred to what we're talking about. So can we defer that whole rest of that?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Counselor Skaken.
Well, your worship, I, I don't know if it's fair to us to have to go through a debate on this unprepared tonight, so I won't support it. I, I prefer the, the normal council procedure process of notice of motions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearings. To those of you that hours ago, that we go back to Counselor Frizzell, and then to Counselor Sampson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall, and bearing in mind that, that looking at ways to encourage diverse candidates to come forward is, is a priority for almost everybody, well, for everyone I've had a chance to talk to, but the time is of the essence, and don't want to get bogged down. I've modified the resolution and, and brought that forward to the seconder, to Counselor Scott. So I'm going to pitch this instead, and we had a chance to consider this with Ms. Connolly, the elections officer as well. The city staff consider options and recommend a campaign school to encourage candidates from diverse backgrounds to consider running in the upcoming 2022 municipal election, and return the recommendation to the August 15th meeting of council.
Thank you. Counselor Everett.
Worship, it's late at night, and I don't want to get into a number of more resolutions to come before us tonight. I think we've done a good day's work already. If there's more to come, then let it be another day.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sampson. Whoops.
Thanks very much, your worship. I guess I have two thoughts, one similar to Counselor Everett, but more in line with, I'm not sure how this topic relates to anything we've discussed. And so I don't know how it, like, motions on the fly aren't allowed unless we have it associated with something that we're discussing, and I, I just don't know how this associates, is all. But the second piece is, I guess, my concern is this seems more like a, I guess I'm very hesitant to make gesture actions that don't, aren't going to result in anything positive, and if we're not having anything come forward until mid, mid to late August, who are we really schooling for campaigns when it's two months before the election, I guess is my concern? Is that really beneficial for anybody? And is the city of Prince George really in the business of providing a campaign school for candidates? I, I think our staff have a lot on their plates when it comes to running the election. So I guess I'm just hesitant on whether this action actually carries any weight, especially being that it's going to be coming forward only two months. And that's just recommendations, it's only going to be coming forward with a recommendation two months before the election. So we're just spending money to have a token gesture, it feels like. So I guess, I don't know, it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me, but I, I don't understand how, how it's necessarily on the floor, so thanks.
Counselor Ramsey, followed by Scott.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor McConkey, Counselor Scott, and myself have been in session since 8:30 this morning. So I think it would be really beneficial if this would come forward as a notice of motion, or filed as a mayor's report to get it on the, on the agenda sooner, but I just, I think it's, it's quite late, so being able to discuss it, I think, can give it its full attention at the next meeting would, would be my preference.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, worship. I think we've made this more complex than it started off being. It was simply an attempt to have the city of Prince George point to existing resources, not to create any. But whatever, whatever council chooses.
Okay, Ms. Connolly, you've suggested that it come back August 15th, so, which is, you know, short of a couple of months. So Counselor Scott and Counselor Frizzell are in a position to bring a notice of motion to the table on the 11th, if it's not going to. But the problem with that is that you're not going to be seeing that until the 25th, and then that really reduces the timeline. So I, yeah. Counselor Frizzell.
Thanks, Mayor Hall, and great questions. Thank you, Counselor Sampson, for articulating what might be in the back of people's minds. In 2011, when we did this, we had just a few weeks, and we took a prepackaged campaign school to encourage women in local government to run. That was back before, before we had 30% of elected officials, women in B.C. That campaign school is really effective. Right now, in B.C., it's at 38%, and the campaign's changed now to getting to 50%. And that's, that's for women, but also, we want to encourage more diverse voices. And Counselor Scott is right, that this isn't meant to be a big, complex thing. Let's just look at ways to encourage, like many other communities, like Edmonton and others are doing right now. It's, this isn't meant to be a grand, complex gesture, just, and, and the tieback was during the remuneration discussion, I think everybody consistently said, we want to get more people engaged and running. It's very important to encourage people, and that's what this came out of. A comprehensive, or a, an active way to get people involved, and one that's proven successful in other communities.
Okay. Well, we do have a recommendation on the floor, moved and seconded, so let's just call the question on the recommendation and move from there. Does that work for council? Okay, all those in favor of the recommendation? Those opposed? Opposed in the room, and opposed on Zoom?
I'm opposed on Zoom.
So we have, I think I counted, is it six to three? Opposed, Counselor Sampson, opposed, Counselor McConkey. Oh, you're for, sorry. So let's just, one more time, all those in favor in the room? Those opposed? So Counselor Everett, Counselor Sampson, and Counselor Skaken are opposed, carries six to three. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Sampson.
Thanks, your worship. I'll try to be quick. I wanted to bring this up earlier, but we had those public hearings to get to. This is directly related to the conversation we had with council remuneration, and my desire to find or explore other options for how we determine council remuneration beyond just the method we've been doing for a number of years now. So to simplify it, as it is late, I'm wondering if we could simply make a motion, rather than me come up with a suggestion now, which I, I think would take a greater debate among council. I think simply having staff maybe develop a brief report, just outlining some other options that council could consider for council remuneration in the, going forward. So that would include things potentially like doing a percentage based on what other levels of government are paying those representatives, or other options, but.
So what you're looking for is for staff to come back with two or three different options that what we're, what we are currently dealing with through the bylaw?
Yeah.
And I wouldn't see this, that time is of the essence, given the fact that we've got staff working on the election, and other things in this would fall. I'm assuming Mr. Babic and Ms. Connolly's bailiwick. So I, if, if there's a seconder to that, then we can pursue it. Counselor Ramsey, and I, I would look for your feedback, Mr. Babic and Ms. Connolly, about timeline.
Thank you, your worship. Council has just given the first three readings to the amendments to the council remuneration bylaw. If that's adopted at the next council meeting, then those rules would start to come into effect next year with the new council. Where my mind is going, your worship, subject to any council direction, of course, is that this could potentially be a work plan item, a strategic priority for the next council to look into. Because they would be subject to the existing rules, and we could look at it a little bit more depth than have it a strategic priority for council if there is an interest in that post-election, your worship.
Would that satisfy what you're looking for, then, Counselor Sampson, if it got on the work plan?
I think as long as.
Sorry, the strategic plan.
Yeah, I think as long as there can be something that comes back before the end of this term, so we can at least not have it go off into the ether, and, you know what I mean? I'm not looking to make a decision as this council, but lay the framework out so the next council can take that on and make a decision early in the term, so it's laid out and the work can be done, I think is something that I'm looking at.
Mr. Babic, does that work if it's a loosely knit framework, and, and this council takes a look, and knowing full well that it'll end up going to the strategic planning session with the next council?
If that's the will of council, your worship, we can, we can put together a high-level report. Doesn't necessarily need to be in Ms. Connolly's area, it can be assigned to other staff that are familiar with staff and council compensation. So we can make that work, your worship, if there's no immediate rush. In other words, if we have at least until October 3rd to bring that back.
Yeah, let's just keep in mind, counsel, that our last meeting is October 10th.
Yep, that'd be, that fits what I'm looking for, your worship.
Yeah, we're, we're pushing the envelope here, so, counsel, we have the recommendation on the floor, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please. Opposed? Opposed in the room, sorry, opposed, Counselor Scott, opposed, counsel, sorry, all those in favor in the room? Opposed in the room? Counselor Kraus, Counselor Frizzell, Counselor Scott, opposed on Zoom?
I'm opposed.
That carries five to four. Great, thank you very much, everyone, if I have, oh, sorry, Ms. Connolly.
Your worship, I was just going to confirm the seconder, but I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion for adjournment, please? Seconder on adjournment, Counselor Ramsey, all those in favor, opposed?